Good evening, everybody. I'm Adam Cummings, the chairman of tonight's meeting, and we'll call this meeting to order as a legally constituted meeting of the Town of Chilai Zoning Board of Appeals. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, board members introduction. Far left is Jim Weasner. Immediate left is Mark Mary. Immediate right is Fred Trot. Far right is Philip Supernault. We have the side table with Paul Wanzan Reed from the Building Department, Matthew Piston, our town council, and our stenographer is Sandy Hewlett. Want to point out that we will hear each application as they're listed on the agenda. If you do want a copy of the agenda, they're on the back cart, the roller cart back there. And at the conclusion of each public hearing, the board will discuss and vote on the application. And each applicant will receive a letter from the Building Department within a week of our decision, whichever way it goes. I also do have to point out, in the event of an emergency, the exits are the entrance that you all came in with the double doors. Each of the doors in the back of the room go into the same hallway, and the doors at each side go outside the building. We haven't had to use any of them yet, so hopefully that can continue. Do have to point out also cell phones and pagers. Pagers, I don't have any way to show you what those are, but just silence those to prevent interruptions. And board question, any issues on the signs for tonight's agenda? All right, so now we'll move on to application number one. Application of Christopher Santoro, 19 Caboose Circle, North Chilai, New York, 14514. For a variance to erect an accessory structure, a shed to be five feet from the east property line where eight feet is allowed at the property located at 19 Caboose Circle. So if the applicant has anything else to add, feel free. Otherwise, we'll go right to board questions.
Yeah, I have nothing to add, just basically to move it to five feet from our property line.
All right, just give me one moment, and I'll bring it up on the screen just to confirm the map and where he would like it to go. Is that the location?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so to point out, the five-foot variance, which is what we're considering tonight, is that dimension off the side, and that's all we're considering tonight.
Yes, the left side. Yeah, correct.
Okay. Jim, any questions?
Was this a recent addition to the property?
Yes, that's correct. You mean, what do you mean by recent? Yeah, I just moved in last month.
So the...
There was no shed, so I'm looking to put a shed at the application.
Okay, so this is in advance of placing the building?
Say again?
This is in advance of placing the shed.
I have it there, but I'm hoping to move it over from where it's currently sitting.
So a question, right now it's eight feet?
Yes.
Okay, and you want to move it three feet?
Correct.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Mark?
Thank you. Why are we looking to relocate this shed?
Because my backyard is on a slope, so where the shed is now is, it's, there's flat ground there, so I want to move it over. I'd rather get it two feet from the line, but I know here it states limits it to five, so that's fine. But basically, I just want to move it over to save some land, usable land. My flat land is limited, so I'm trying to save some usable land, flat land. Okay, thank you.
Fred?
No questions.
Phil?
No questions.
Side table?
No.
Now I will open up the public hearing, or the public hearing for this application, if anyone's interested. Not seeing any hands, ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Is there a second? We have a second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, with this size shed, I don't have any conditions of approval, because it's small enough, not needing a permit. So I will go ahead and declare the zoning board as lead agency, and based on the information and evidence at this hearing, find this application to be a type-two action and of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt this application.
No move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes. So this was approved tonight, you'll get a letter within a week. Please continue to work with the Building Department.
I will do. Thank you.
Thank you. I should have asked if anyone else needed it, but our interpreter will leave for tonight. Unless, I'd like, if anyone else does need those, I didn't even ask that ahead of time. Does anyone need a sign language interpreter? Okay. Application number two, the application of Vista Villa Holdings LLC, 3313 Chilai Ave., Rochester, New York, 14624, for a variance to A, develop a substandard lot to be 5,170 square feet where 10,000 square feet is required; B, erect a fence to be a height of six feet zero inches where four feet zero inches is allowed in the front yard, the corner of the corner lot; and C, to erect and place, or erect and placement of accessory structures, a shed and a generator, to be 7.5 feet where 35 feet is required in the front setback, and eight feet zero inches where 10 feet zero inches is required in the rear setback at the property located at 100 Clubhouse Drive. Good evening, if you can identify yourself for the stenographer, I forgot to say that earlier, else it gives me time to bring up your application here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Fred Shelley from BME Associates, representing Vista Villas Holding LLC, the applicant tonight. Thank you for hearing this application. As stated, there are a few variances that the applicant is requesting, specifically, as stated, minimum lottery variance from 10,000 required to 5,170 proposed, the rear air setback variance of 10 foot required where 7.5 is proposed, and the front air setback variance where 35 feet is required and 7.5 feet is proposed. Also mentioned and included with the application was a request to allow a six-foot tall, basically solid panel fence to be constructed around the control panel for the pump station. However, the applicant is going to withdraw that portion of the application as the pump station, which is ultimately going to be conveyed to the Monroe County Pure Waters slash Gates Chilai Ogden Sewer District, as indicated that they do not, they would not like to maintain the fence in that area. If I may, I'll just start with the brief history of the project. Vista Villas is two consists of 41 lots, proposed single-family homes on roughly 15.8 acres of land located on the east side of Archer Road in one of the Black Creek. It's a portion of the overall 174 lot, 282 acre Vista Villas subdivision, phases two through six. Those are all under the ownership of the applicant. Phase one of the subdivision was completed under a separate developer entity, and that's right there. Going back in time a bit, phase two through six obtained preliminary approval on January 13th, 2015. The planning board issued a secret negative declaration for phases two through six based on the preliminary plans that were submitted at the time. The 2015, the 2015 approval waived final approval for phase two, however, the planning board issued a reapproval of phase two on April 9th, 2024 of this year of the current development plan, which is generally consistent with the previously approved plans. The approved plans have always included a proposed pump station facility to be located within an irregularly shaped right-of-way portion that was going to be dedicated to the town. The original proposal would have had this pump station on town land within an easement to the Gates Chilai Ogden Sewer District. Through the review and the approval process, the Sewer District has indicated that they wish to have this entire facility located on land that's going to be needed to them. So therefore, with the conversion of this being town land to a separate entity, that necessitates the requirement for obtaining these variances for the project. The conversion of the process, yeah, so that's what triggered the necessity of that.
So to be clear, this is a small parcel that's just going to hold the proposed pump station that's shown there, which is going to service the future phase two through six that have been approved to be developed?
Yes, actually, it's just the 47 lots of phase two.
Okay.
The remaining lots will be...
Go by gravity?
Gravity, superfluous.
Okay. Okay.
Structures, I'm sorry, so the minimum lot relief results from the remaining areas outside of the right-of-way, so this 5,100 square feet was actually going to be a portion of Vista Villas Drive. We're maintaining the 64-foot minimum right-of-way width. Leftover land is about 27 feet on the east side and 18 feet on the west side of the property. And this layout actually decides the lot, and it does work for the Pure Waters and the Sewer Districts. So that's essentially where that was originally planned and where it's been maintained through this design process.
Okay.
So there are no residential uses or structures that are, will be proposed on this parcel that will just be for this public service, for the public utility service entity operating the pump station. Structures setbacks, just for clarification, we already talked about the fence would be removed, however, there is a control panel cabinet indicated in the middle of the paint area there, and then there's also a proposed generator, which will be located on a 6-by-10 concrete pad on the west side of the paint areas. So both of those, they require the front air setback reviews as previously indicated. The applicant had requested a modification to the planning board's approval, which includes the addition of this pump station parcel. So we had obtained the approval for 47 single-family residential lots, however, this will be another lot that's to be committed to that. So once we hopefully get through and obtain these variances to allow this minimum-sized lot, the planning board will be able to grant, or consider them, or will allow to add them. Lastly, we've provided the written responses to the five factors for consideration when granting a variance. There include the application. If we have to review any of the board if needed, or any other questions, thank you, board, and have an answer.
I just have one quick clarification. I know the applicant is the developer right now, but as you said, this parcel's going to the Monroe County GCO, the Gates Chilai Ogden Sewer District. So just to clarify that, is Monroe County can't be the applicant because they don't hold the parcel yet, so the applicant is still the developer for this variance. There is procedures that the county has to do through their legislative process, which will be much more months than they wanted to do to find out if they would get the variances here. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
So just wanted to make sure to clarify, is we're not granting an undersized...
If it was Monroe County, they wouldn't even have to ask.
No, if it was Monroe County, they would have to ask. If it was the Town of Chilai, they wouldn't have to ask. Because if it was just a town parcel on there, it would just be expanding our public right-of-way and go through it that way. Oh, and Paul's saying eh?
I was gonna say, because that leaf composting facility on, behind the airport, they didn't get, they didn't need any approvals.
Yeah.
The county doesn't have to get approvals from us?
No.
Oh.
We had tiers of government, sir.
Oh, my mistake, I misspoke on that one.
Low.
I didn't realize we were that low on the totem pole. I thought we still had some home rule capabilities, and the county couldn't step all over it.
Once it was a county, they would just get it.
Yes, if it, now, that is accurate, as I just learned right there, as if the county had just taken this, then we would have had a very big surprise at our public right-of-way. But anyway, that's where we're at tonight to help out with this understanding on this project. So Jim, any questions?
I guess a couple. I mean, where was, this is, so the phase one doesn't need a pumping station because it's high enough, is that a correct statement?
That's correct, yes.
So we're just, need the pumping station because it's, we're much lower than, than obviously where the sewers are. Where was the original placement of this going to be?
Right in the same location.
So the same spot, so that hasn't changed?
Correct.
It's just a matter of who owns that little piece of property.
That's true.
Okay, that's all I have.
Mark?
Awesome, thank you.
Fred?
It says out here, "Proposed antenna foundation," so there are plans to be an antenna on there?
Originally, in further standard of Pure Waters details, they do include an antenna, however, subsequent coordination with the, with the county, they're requesting to remove the antenna, and we're going to be connecting directly to their fiber communications, so that antenna goes away.
Okay. Any other questions? Phil?
No questions.
Side table, anything to add?
I think you did a good job of explaining that the positioning of all these things is, is really being dictated by Monroe County Pure Waters and the GCO district, and how they want to align things for when they have to respond to events out there.
Okay. All right, I will open up the public hearing for this application. I think I'm going to wait a while to see, this one's an intriguing topic, to see if anyone in the public has interest in sewer pump stations. Still not seeing any...
Can I say something positive?
You, yes, you still...
I used to work for Litzemberger 20, 20 Clubhouse Drive. I used to work for many state facilities. We had pumping stations, generators, everything here looks perfectly designed to what I'm used to work with, and I fully support it.
Thank you. All right, we can mark down that we had a public comment on that. Not seeing any other hands, ask for a motion to close this public comment. Oh, we have another hand.
I just have one quick question.
Yes.
I'm in 17 Clubhouse Drive. Who will maintain that facilities? Is it going to be Monroe County?
Yes.
Would it be Gates Chilai?
No, it'll be, it's Monroe County, so the Gates Chilai Ogden is just a designation of the towns that got into a sewer district agreement many years ago. It's now being run by Monroe County. Yep. All right, now I'll continue on with that motion to close the public hearing. Move. We have motions, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
So like, any concerns regarding, like, noise would be part of the planning board?
Yes.
So...
Yes.
Assuming they've addressed the fact that there's a house right there?
Yep.
Want a lot of noise if, if I was that person, let alone some of the people around them, but I'm sure, sure that's probably designed in or built in.
Yeah.
Facility.
Yeah, plus it's underground.
Except for the generator.
Hmm?
Except for the generator.
If the generator's running, everybody's house has got generators going on.
It's a submersible.
Yeah, this is a submersible station, but yeah, if the generator's running other than the exercising part, the power's out.
The motors above ground, though.
No. For the generator, yes, but not the pumps. The only thing above ground is the cabinet, the control cabinet. I like to, I think it makes sense, oh, going back to the fence, Fred, so Monroe County doesn't want a fence, correct?
That's correct.
So just go back to that, you're taking, I just wanted to further clarify, you're taking that off as a requested variance, correct?
That is correct.
I just wanted to go back and visit that one to make sure.
Yeah, so above ground, the only above-ground structures are the control cabinet, and then the...
Yeah, but specific to our variances here, tho, those are for setback purposes, but for the height of the fence, I just wanted to make sure we're not seeing a fence, so we're not going to grant a variance for a six-foot fence, where typically we only allow four feet. Side table, can I even put in that they have to get a permit? Because it's for the county, and we don't do permits for that, so no condition for billing permits or anything, correct? All right, I'd like to hear, or decide on these all as one, are you guys okay with that?
Makes sense.
All right, so we'll do all of them.
So what are you going to do with B, you're gonna...
What's that?
What are you going to do with B?
B has been taken out completely. That's been withdrawn at the applicant's request.
Okay.
So this is just for A and C. And I will declare the zoning board as lead agency, and based on the information, evidence presented this hearing, find this application to be an unlisted action of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now I will make a motion, or ask for a motion to adopt this application as presented.
No move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so this is all set.
Thank you, board.
Thanks, Fred, good presentation. Be curious if we said no, what the county would say. All right, application number three, the application of Adam Schneider, 445, Chilai Ragga Town Line Road, Churchville, New York, 14428. Application is Rita Harper, 140 Bowen Road, Churchville, New York, 14428, for a variance to A, develop a substandard lot to be 34,972 square feet where two acres minimum, and 87, or 87,120 square feet is required; B, the proposed lot width of 100.0 feet where 275.0 feet is required; C, proposed site setback of 19.2 feet where 50.0 feet is required; and D, proposed all classes of unique soils, class one through four is not permitted, class five through nine is permitted at the property located at 140 Bowen Road. Just want to clarify that last part, D, the class one through four and five through nine, those are soil classifications for prime and non-prime agricultural soils that's in our town code. So what it's saying is that if that site has class one through four, no development is permitted on it, and if it has what's classified as five through nine classified soils, it is permitted. In this case, from a soil survey from a long time ago, those were all identified as one through four, is that accurate, Paul?
Yes.
Okay, so...
The thought is, classes one through four are good agricultural land.
Yes.
Yes. An AC district, you don't want to build on something...
Correct, correct. So I just want to point out what those numbers all stood for. So that's why they're asking for relief to be able to go beyond that requirement in the code. All right, so just to zoom in on the two maps to show it, that's the substandard parcel. If you can identify yourself for this.
Adam Schneider.
And just to confirm, that's the lot we're talking about, the...
Yes, I see.
And then on the other side, this one over here, that's the layout with your house and your septic and leach fields?
What, is it that's proposed?
Yes, yep. Okay. Anything else to add on this one?
We're basically here, I've got the owners of the land, they own the land right now.
Yep.
They're here with us, neighbors next door, and my parents were kind of built this far. And we're just wanting to make sure that we can get the variance, because I'd like to buy the property, I can't do it because I can't buy the property, own the variance, because I don't want to bring money in, I don't, we're not like a catch 23, I just heard that last guy, like, hey, they don't really have it, is it in yet? But I catch 23, we just want to make sure that if we comply with everything, there's no reason like I can't buy it and build on it. If not, it's just going to be a vacant lot that has 100 foot, where they're going to build on it, so.
Understood. And you are in a unique one with the PRD designation and the underlying agricultural conservation zoning, so just point that out to everybody, is that's why the agricultural falls into that.
I don't quite understand that, because it's, it's PRD, so how does the AC come in?
So PRD is really a zoning overlay that was put on top of the AC zone, and this single lot, much like any other single lot, you have to have, is that a minimum of, oh, he's, they're checking on some, I believe it's a minimum of 50 acres.
So it started out as an AC?
Yes.
And then somehow...
The zoning map update turned it into PRD.
Why would the AC still apply that?
Because I would let Paul allude to that one, or correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but once again...
I thought you only have one zoning...
But one's an overlay. The actual zoning is AC, but then it has an overlay over top of it, which is the PRD.
Is that prior to the, when their house originally was on and now was built?
Um, the, I don't remember when it was AC, but I don't want to, I don't want to dwell on it too much, that's why we're at the parameters we're at tonight on those ones. So we'll get to those parts of it, but that's where we've got a blending of the two. And, correct me if I'm wrong, if we solely looked at this as a PRD, we couldn't even consider this one, because it's not big enough. You'd have to buy an accumulation of 50 acres of surrounding land, or...
PRDs for development.
Right, so even though the zoning map has it, but when a parcel doesn't fall into that, that's when it goes to the underlying zone. The underlying zoning is the AC, which is why we have the parameters here. So this would allow a future single-family house to be built. That's why we're here. We can't set it to parameters for a PRD, because we aren't at that big, massive PRD zoning, or zoning acreage.
Dropped it down to AC, and now we have the AC variances to cover.
Yes, dropping it down means going to the underlying, yep, yep. We had a, not in the PRD, but we had a similar one over on Stryker years ago, with Carol Thomas' house. So any other questions? No. Okay, Martin?
I'm also, thanks, Adam.
Fred?
Do you plan on building on the same footprint of, what was it, the house that's there?
That's why we're going to get a mayor, because we're trying to get the variance, because it's going to be... The footprint of 100 feet wide, you're saying, versus what's there, or the same house size as it was?
Same house size, I was just wondering.
There's no way. I don't know, I don't know how these four boys even lived in that house together with their two parents, it is tiny, tiny, it's, this room is, half this room is the size of the house, bro.
I don't think you can build that.
Nine, seven, two, four.
Yeah, I mean, there's more adults, more children than two adults in there, it's, it's very small.
Okay. Yeah, once again, that wouldn't meet, ours is 1,200 square feet, or 11?
How many bedrooms?
Uh, I heard four kids, I don't know how many bedrooms.
I'm just going to guess there. There were five, oh yeah, that's right, they had five kids.
Five kids.
Sorry. It's all...
So what would be our minimum house?
One of them lived in the closet, I can remember that. Johnny, that's right.
Three bedrooms, probably 1,150.
Okay, so, to point out, it's 1,150 would be our estimated max, or sorry, minimum that we would have, so, all right.
Yeah, it's just a sliver of a piece of property, too.
Right.
It is a small piece of property, and that's where we, you know, obviously, it's overgrown, it's really bad at the moment, there's trees just growing everywhere, I know the neighbor here, he's ready to see something done with it himself, too. It's, and it's, it's a mile and a half down. My parents live in Hilton now, and my parents are getting older, not, I'm thinking, as I, but my dad's old, and I need to move them closer to me, and this is the best property I found, so.
Any other questions, Fred?
No, I don't have any other questions.
Phil?
No.
And just a clarification, as you said, it's got an existing house on it, has it been actively farmed? No, so, it's not like we're losing farmland, it just happens to be in a survey from 1976. Anything to add, side table?
So most of these houses that exist now are...
So they're pre-existing, non-conforming, so if they were keeping the same footprint and the same house there, they could just leave it. However, that house doesn't, the square footage doesn't meet modern standards, so therefore they would have to come in for some sort of variance. This alleviates a lot of that, and as, I'll open a public hearing, but as it was stated, is, this would help improve this piece of property that is sitting there, that has had a house historically.
And so these houses that are there now exist on a class one through four soils, probably, right?
Could be, or that's how it was mapped back in 1976. So, go ahead and I will open up the public hearing. This is where if anyone would like to speak about this one, feel free to for this application. And if you could just state your...
Yeah, John, I have my next door neighbor. I want to just get a clarification on the distance from the side of my property to whatever structure is going to be built.
Yep. So you're on which side?
East.
So east, so on this map it would be the right-hand side. I will zoom in so that you can see it. The building structure is 23.6 feet.
Okay, that's to the property line and whatever distance from the property line to your house. Correct.
Yeah, and I don't know the distance to your house. Not with this map.
That's all, thank you.
Anyone else? Sorry, I just have to work on my homework real quick. Not seeing any other hands, asking for a motion to close the public hearing for this application?
Motion.
We have motions, there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carried. One condition of approval will be just to get a building permit, so if we do approve it, continue on with that. You would have applied already, so just continue on with the building department on that.
He's also got to do, yeah, he knows. Yeah, minor site.
We weren't saying that until we knew we had this survey.
Yeah, yeah. Minors, he's got to do a site plan.
Site plan and he's not subdividing, right? But he does have to do a site plan.
Right.
Yep. I'm not going, our code already says that, so I'm not going to cover that one. I just usually...
He's looking great, I hope.
Good.
Continue on that way.
Like the other one, I'm not seeing any real reason to split these up unless somebody sees otherwise. All right, and... I will declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information evidence presented this hearing, find this application to be a type two action of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I will ask for a motion to adopt this application with the one condition of approval that a building permit must be obtained.
Motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil? I also vote yes, so continue on that path on that and improve the lot.
Thank you guys.
All right, thanks, have a good night. All right. All right, application number four, the application of Richard Morris, 3457 Chillicothe, Rochester, New York, 14624. Applicant for a variance A for the area of accessory structures, sheds A, B, C, and D to be 449.11 square feet where 192 square feet is allowed. B, setbacks of accessory structures to be 5.0 feet where 8.0 feet is allowed. And C, area of accessory structures, the screened room to be 305 square feet, pre-existing, non-conforming where 192 square feet is allowed. And D, the height of fences in the front yard where Florentine is a secondary front and that would be a height of six feet where four feet, 4.0 feet is allowed at the property located at 3457 Chillicothe. Good evening. Good, how are you? Just bringing those up and, and if you have anything else to add on this, I can start wherever you'd like. Okay. So this one is, it appears to be more of a code compliance update. So you do have four sheds up there, so I'll go through that first one. Because that's a pretty accurate number. We usually don't get them down to the hundredth place of square footages. The accessory structures, that's how far away. And just to go through the images, so this is structure B as we talk about. This brown structure, is that A? I'm, I'm not sure.
I don't know if it's A, B, I don't know.
I don't remember it. Oh, I see it, so here's A, there's B.
It makes it C.
Yep, so that would be C and then D is somewhere else. And this is a measurement showing five feet right to there. And then, because that says six feet. And then that's the pre-existing enclosure over here. And... There we go. So there's A, B, and C, and then D would be the...
One against the house.
Oh, there it is. I was looking for dark black lines. So yes, then the frame shed that's right here to connect to the house. Okay. All right.
Screen porch, is that...
So the screen room is this building in the center.
And is that an accessory structure?
So why isn't that included? Why aren't they together, the screened room and the sheds?
That is a good question. Paul, is, is the screened, is the screened room included in the total 449.11 square feet of accessory structure area? Because I don't have the dimensions of each of them.
Under the same section of code. It would be five, then.
No.
No?
You'll see, you'll see that...
So C is its own standalone.
I separated it out, C.
So...
A, B, C, and D are the first one, variance A.
Yep, and that's just for sheds.
Area of the accessory structure.
Yep.
Screen room, it's labeled in my denial page.
Yep. But why did you separate out accessory structures in varying types?
Because we separate, we in the town separate out accessory structures. Sheds go with sheds, gazebos go with gazebos, pergolas go with pergolas, and on down the line.
Perfect.
So he's really looking for 754 square feet.
No, we don't add them together. They're separate. It's not accumulative of accessory structures. It's 192 square feet for each type of accessory structure, correct, Paul?
That's the way we've looked at it, yes.
It's different, but...
And then, these are all existing structures, correct?
Some of the sheds that's attached to the house?
Yep.
Yeah, that's pre-existing, that was already there and the screen room was already there.
Yep.
And I got a permit for B to have built. And, and A and C are just little Costco plastic screw little shed that I put on the little platform that I built.
Yep, and then the six-foot tall fence.
Yeah, so...
That's existing too.
That wasn't it, that, so I don't know if y'all know too much about that property, all right? So that property has, I don't know how big it is, but it was four feet deep and it was really huge. It was a pond. And I got rid of it because my daughter was outside and I just pretty much closed it off. That was a chain link gated fence that's on the side of Florentine. That was all torn up, broken down, and it also had trees that was tied up into it. So I had the tree stomp, I had the tree, cut it out, ripped out, and I replaced it. Because like I said, my daughter's in that backyard playing around, that's why we moved out of the job.
Yep.
And that fence that I put up was put up by a professional so I could have something. But I created, I guess, what if I needed dump trucks or anything to go through? Because I know I was going to do more things to that yard later on.
But it sounds like regardless of gates and all that, you put the six-foot fence on but didn't check to see, because it was a four-foot fence and then you brought it up to a six-foot high fence, correct?
Right, so I, I didn't know nothing about that. Like I said, that fence been up for like, I've been up since 2015. That fence been up since 2016, so...
Okay. Yeah, once again, this is a code compliance effort is what this application more is.
You guys, you guys understand my frustration, right? So the back person of my, the neighbor, only caused this ruggis to you guys. You know what I'm saying? You guys, I've been dealing with Jerry down there doing anything I needed because he talking like, hey, you need to get this done, this got to be done. I know nothing about that, you know? I come from the city, I lived out here and I was just trying to make a nice living space for my family. I never spoke to this lady a day in my life since I've been there since 2015. And she got mad because I wanted to clear some tree limbs climbing over the fence on my side, right? So she still bothers me. I'm going to call the police and I don't know what's going to happen.
I don't want to, I don't want to escalate and we're not, we're not here for civil neighbor disputes.
But I wouldn't be going through this if it wasn't for her. I don't say I'm trying to get it on under radar, but I don't bother nobody, you know? I got my neighbor here that's on, that's to my, that's not on the side of Florentine. I got my other neighbor here that's down the street on the cul-de-sac and I don't bother them. I know, I know everybody almost in that cul-de-sac. This is the only lady that wants to give me...
I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt and I want to make sure to keep it focused on, we're trying to gather the history of why there's so many structures and where, where we're there. And I want to stay focused on that.
Know what I needed a permit for. I was just only putting a fence that would protect my, my daughter at the, at the time when she was being born. She was two years old and I wanted to make sure the gate of houses and, you know what I'm saying, was enclosed.
Yep.
That's all that, that's the only reason why I put that. I didn't see the reason to put a gated fence there. And I know that my family is big, I'm a family of five, I got two girls and a son and my wife. And I want to make sure I keep everybody enclosed, you know what I'm saying? Like if we have parties and get together, I don't need everybody seeing what's going on. There's no gated fence there.
Once again, we don't, we don't care if it's gated. I just want to keep making sure that we're only here for the height. So by code, you would be allowed if it was four feet tall, you wouldn't even be here about the fence.
Right.
There would be nothing in there. We're only here discussing the height of the fence.
We want to be here once for her.
We're, no, that's, once we, no, not until the public hearing comment can anyone else, this is just between the board and the applicant. We, we will have an opportunity for the public to talk, so have no fear on that. So I think we've covered that one on, on these ones.
And the A and C that you see there?
Yep.
I, me and my wife run an in-home daycare. I'm in Monroe County, Chappell, I sits on the board. And those are there for me to make sure I put stuff in there for my kids that if I don't want to get wet. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Like, it's a small little shed, doesn't even take those space. And if, and if anybody that should be BSing about something, it's my neighbor right here that sits on his gate.
Let's, let's focus on the stuff that's on your property and the inventory of the items that we're looking to consider here and, and the variances that you're requesting. Okay, I just want to make sure, and that goes to everybody, as we're here about these specific variances, these four things, we're talking about square footages, we're going to talk about heights, and we don't need to talk about opinions, we don't need to talk about how we feel about each other. I understand there's frustrations, I just want to make sure to keep it clear. I don't want to escalate anything here tonight. But we are here to just consider the inventory of structures, the square footages that result, and that is all. Okay. Jim, any questions?
Yeah, just trying to understand what was pre-existing.
That screen room, that big thing that you see that's sitting there in the middle of the yard? And apparently I didn't know that was an add-on that they're saying that's attached to the house. They're saying it's a little shed, that was there already too.
So when you moved in, both the, that shed attached to the house and the screen room were already there?
Yeah, the only thing I added was A, B, and C and that tall fence.
Yep.
Okay.
And that would make sense because that is not on the survey. The survey is drawn with dimensions of that frame shed and the screen room, but doesn't have dimensions of that and doesn't, and actually depicts it as a chain link fence. That's why it's got, and a board fence over on this side, on the north side. But it looks like it calls out chain link on the rest of it.
Yeah, and that fence is the same, is taller than the side that I put up. So I don't, I, I just don't understand. That fence that, that was originally there that's coming into my backyard?
Yep.
That's attached to my side of the house is taller than the fence that I put.
And that's...
That's why I felt comfortable to put that.
Understandable, it's because you're a corner lot fronting Florentine Way, that's why it's a shorter, all permitted fence on Florentine Way in your side yard. And even from your house here, this could all be six feet along your back property line.
Oh, thank you, I'm so glad to know it.
Up, up until where you reach your house. So your house extending that line all the way down, that's as far back as you can go six feet on. It has to be four feet in your side yard or, which is actually a front yard. And then it can be six feet in these back parts, but it has to be four feet here by code requirement. That's why we're here tonight is because you have a six-foot, which is two feet higher than what we allow by code. Any other questions, Jim?
That's all I got.
Mark?
So we have several structures?
Yes.
We are over by how many permitted combined?
It's not about permits, it's about the square footage. So we're, we're just over double, just over double on the accessory structure sheds. And we are, uh, it's a hundred, about a hundred, hundred square feet over, so there'd be a third over on the screen room.
Which is pre-existing.
Pre-existing.
Correct. Correct. Correct, and on these sheds, um...
A and B doesn't need a crack.
So sir, one of the things we tried to do as part of the zoning board in the past is we try to reduce the number of variances or the degree of a variance, okay? So follow me here. Is there any way you could do that? Can you reduce either the number or the square footage of those sheds that you have on your property today?
Well, B, B is like, like, built, like one of them Amish type of buildings. There's nothing I can do, that's my tool shed. I got all my tools in there. And A, and A and C has stuff in there for the, for the kids, you know? So I got little small things already in the yard. I mean, I'm already taking up my backyard with, you know what I'm saying? Which is fine for me that I'm doing, putting little things in there for the kids to put their stuff in and store away. But I got bikes in there, I don't have no room for bikes. So they are here for a reason, it's not they just sitting there, you know? Like I get what you're saying, C cannot downside, but if I'm going to do that, I'm going to just do what most people that you know, I hate when they just throw stuff in the yard and just cover it up with a tarp and make my yard look like crap. You know, I think she, she showed, but I don't know.
Thank you.
But then my yard would just look like crap, you know what I'm saying? So my yard is taking care of it. I have not have my yard look like nothing but prestige like things since I did it. I work hard every day making sure that yard is cut and making sure that it looks presentable when people pass that house every single day, every week I'm out there. I'm out there more than probably anybody that, you know, is in that neighborhood. And I do it.
I can appreciate that. So I guess I'll take my question to the next step. If it came down to losing rather than reducing, what would you rather do? Would you rather consider reducing than losing in square footage of your variances within height?
If I'm reducing, I'm losing anyway, so it's a no-win situation.
I would think what he's getting at is we're asking, we're trying to minimize, our goal as a board is to minimize the variances they come in. So one opportunity that is being discussed here is if one of the sheds was reduced. Meaning, meaning the square footage variance that you're requesting would be reduced, that helps justify our decision of that much relief. It minimizes the relief request. For instance, shed A is five feet off. If shed A were to be consolidated and that stuff moved into another building and A was taken off of the inventory, that would then increase the setback, which would get rid of the setback of accessory structures where you need eight feet. You would no longer need a variance of five feet because you would have eight feet to parcel B and we would be all set on that side setback. Then that would lessen the variance request for square footage for sheds. You would still get a variance, you could still get a variance approved by this board, but it's not as drastic as what was proposed. We are trying to minimize it if we have options to do that. And I do need to point out for everybody's satisfaction here is we can understand and appreciate that you're trying to do it for your family and, and that's the ultimate goal. However, our goal is we listen to applicants and the applications to the land, not to a particular person, their uses, their families, or their practices. Because variances stay with the land forever. So if we grant... So if we grant a variance for a shed that's, and this is not for this one, but a shed that's five times the amount that's allowed, that stays for the, in perpetuity. So there could be five property owners after that. So we are not considering it on a personal basis.
There's a neighbor like two thousand.
So I'm just saying for how we, I'm, I'm trying to explain what we try to do here in terms of variances. It is not to you as just the applicant. We are looking at the land and those variances to that land. Not the uses, the storage of materials. I'm not trying to get you to compare to the neighbors or to compare what your uses and cleanliness and things like that. I'm just trying to explain to you what we're trying to do, as our job is tasked to do here, is we think of the land and the applicant, uh, the applications that are applied to that land. Does that make sense to you? Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Um, and so for instance, this is an example of us pursuing modifications. So one other alternative could be is moving shed A away from the side lot line so that it is eight feet off, and then you don't need a variance for five feet. That's specific to that one. And you would still leave the square footage for sheds, but it removes one of the other variances. That is our goal, is to minimize as best we can.
So if I move shed A, could I put shed A somewhere else?
You could, and at that point, we would modify your application tonight to get rid of the, uh, letter B, okay? You would still have the same one for letter A with that square footage because shed A is forty square feet in that four hundred and forty-nine point one-one. Is that easily understood on that part of it? Now, what he was getting at on his proposal is it would reduce it by forty square feet if A went away altogether, which is a ten percent reduction. That's a, a quantitative, a numerical number that we can say we reduce something. Um, that's where he's getting at. And in terms of applicants, if we deny something today, it stays with the land forever. So therefore, you would be given a timeframe to remove all the sheds. And you would have to comply with that, and code enforcement would be the ones tasked with enforcing that. That's how this works, is we try to kind, find the compromise in there. We appreciate that you came in here, and these code compliance ones do pop up, because we don't get everything in town. That there, it's too big of a town to do that. Um, but we try to be fair and balanced in all of ours.
Some of it is gated.
I can't speak to that. So you wanna, so you would revise it to get rid of A?
Yeah, it's a small, it's small, it's on, you know what I'm saying, it's on my neighbor's fence anyway. I can clear it up. He gets so busy, I can't, I can have that for the moment, so I cleaned it up for him.
Okay, so if you get rid of A, um, that would eliminate variance request B, and it would reduce the letter A to four hundred and nine point one-one square feet. Um, I appreciate that. Is that?
No, thank you.
Um...
Thank you.
So Fred, any questions from you?
Um, in, in the same vein, I'm asking this to you. If it goes on the deck, would it still be considered a shed?
If it goes on the deck, yes.
I can't do it. Don't worry about it, Fred. I mean, I'd be in compliance for Monroe County for, um, for OCLF, that's for children and family services. I can't do that. I won't even, I won't even attempt that.
I think, I think going on the deck, it would still be a detached structure.
Okay.
Correct, Paul? Um, but once again, the frame shed off the back of the house, um, that one's being labeled as, as an attached one because it's not directly, it might be attached to the house, but it's not accessible from the house. From within the house. Any other questions?
So, so you're saying the chain link fence is six feet high?
On the west side. On this side.
The fence on Florentine's too high.
The, the boarded fence is six feet here. That's what we're considering out here. I didn't go on measure here. He, he's saying that this one's higher.
No, 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 that's not, that's my neighbor's side. That's, that's been there, that's the chain link side.
That's what I'm saying. So that's what he's asking is if...
Are you saying that's six feet high?
No, that's chain link. That's like...
Well, chain link can be six feet.
Oh, but that's not high though.
Oh, I thought you said that it was high. No, but I, I thought you said that there was as high as the other one that you had.
Right there, the side six, six feet side on the opposite side, um, yeah, right, no, the other side, right there. So go up and curve into my, right there, that side right there.
Yeah.
That was there already.
Yep.
All right, and I just added that six feet side to corner it off and bring it down the same height that was.
I think his confusion is, over on this side, you said that this side of it was taller.
No, I was just talking about that side connecting to my house.
Talking about the existing board.
I got you.
Okay, no, that's what I, I didn't understand. I apologize. No other questions?
Phil?
Um, building C, if something could be done about that, what would that lower the total square feet to?
Another forty square feet would be brought down.
Any chance of that happening?
I just got rid of A.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm trying to get you to...
I, I mean, if that were the case, I mean, what's the point of me coming in? I mean, I'm trying to keep something, but I mean...
Okay. No more questions?
Side table, anything to add? All right, I will open up the public hearing. Public hearing, yes sir, now is your time. Thank you for the patience. Yes.
So if we had the fence on, I live at two Florentine Way, uh, so...
Your name?
Paul, sorry. Paul, H U S S A R. I live at two Florentine Way, so I am on where the six-foot fence side is.
Yep.
So I'm looking directly at it.
Yep.
Question is, is if you had that put in by a fence company in 2016, they would have had to obtain a permit, correct?
No.
No.
Why is that?
Chi-Lai does not permit fences.
Nope.
So if you don't permit them, then why do you, how can you decide?
We have a height regulation. We have a height regulation. You can have four foot in the front yard, six foot in the side and rear yards. Mr. Morris's issue is the fact that he has a primary front and a secondary front. His primary front is his address, Chi-Lai Ave. Secondary front is Florentine. Given that there's two fronts, he cannot have a six-foot, which he considered it's his side yard. Most people would.
Sure, would not do.
But it's not. It's a secondary front, therefore, can't have a six-foot fence.
Wouldn't a fence company have to know that, whether they put a fence up in Chi-Lai?
You'd be surprised.
Yeah, it doesn't...
I, that's why I'm asking the question. Isn't it part of their job to know that?
No, so normally, they just construct it, and since we don't require a permit, then that monetary and that tracking doesn't happen. Uh, we have had it numerous times where they come in front of this board and they get caught, and then we have to come in.
That would be an idea that we would trust that at some point?
That, that's not for this board to decide.
Just pointing out.
It's, it's a good question.
Prevents the problem that you currently have.
It's, it's a good question, um...
The fence that's been up for almost ten years, eight years, so...
Not, not for this board's jurisdiction, but a good question.
I mean, I have the best, probably the best visual sightline into his backyard from my home. And none of his structures are obtrusive to me at all, including his fence.
So a question to you. So you're saying that the six-foot fence provides good, uh, screening of his backyard to your viewing?
Oh, yeah, they absolutely does a great job. If you take that to four feet, I will be able to see every, absolutely everything he does in the yard.
Okay, and...
Anywhere inside my home and my front porch.
Okay, and one other prying question is, has this ever obstructed, obstructed your viewing as you're driving down Florentine Way? Does it get in the way?
No, because...
You're on the other side.
That part where that arrow cuts in up there?
Yep.
So where the structure, where that fence comes in, he's got a very long drive.
Okay.
So when you pass this fence, I still have forty feet before I get to the stop sign.
Okay.
Maybe more, I would have to adjust it. But it's a fair distance to the point that I can see coming all the way down both ways.
Okay, thank you.
I would say the house in the bright obstructs your view given that part where the distance.
Okay.
So no, that's not even remotely...
Okay, I just wanted to ask the question. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
How you doing? I'm Matt Essie. So I live at thirty-four sixty-one Chi-Lai Ave, so it's on the A side. So I have a raised ranch. I can see directly into the property. I think a couple of things. Um, the pictures were a little bit dark. It didn't look like, like it looks in person there, so they are well-maintained. Um, yeah, when I looked at them, I'm like, what is that? But they, they are well-maintained and like the plastic ones are, are new. To me, it doesn't take away, I think, everything that the Morrisons do to maintain their property actually has helped. And I'm not talking about personnel, but from a neighborly standpoint, I've, I've been there twice as long as him. And he knows everybody in the neighborhood, and he's always the first one at home, so...
Yes, anyone else?
I'm James. I live twenty-eight Florentine Way. I was gonna say exactly what these two gentlemen said, honestly. It's, it's, it looks good. It doesn't obstruct your view at a lot of times when you're driving up Florentine Way. After you pass that, you see the, there's no obstruction in anyone's vision or anything.
Okay.
And I'm curious too, because the, where the fence is located in the spot, there's a slope. I don't know where, where you measure from for six feet, you know, that's, that's the max, obviously. But, you know, if you're in this yard, that, that might be four, because it houses on top of like a hill, right? So I didn't think about that.
Yeah, so the topography, the measurements always come from the ground where it is. We guess topography will always dictate things, and while it says six feet, but it's not six feet flat everywhere.
Right, right, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, other than that, I don't mean...
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Um, India Morris, I'm sorry, what was that?
India Morris, that's my wife.
Um, I'm just from the children's standpoint. We have children running their sixty swimsuits summertime. And apparently, people peeking in the backyard, taking pictures. Privacy standpoint, it's just really not safe. I'll say we're at four feet with them. Privacy-wise, and them running around, so I really prefer if possible, keep it sixty. For privacy and, you know, say what you want.
All right, um, I will say, we did receive, um, a written letter, or an email, rather, um, from the neighbor to your rear, to the south, um, with some pictures on it related to drainage, uh, some water impacts, and, um, a few other things to, to just make sure you keep it maintained. So we can't condition that, but we do ask that you keep maintaining it, um, regardless of where we are. But once again, um, I wanna make sure to keep this one clear for us. At this one, as we're here talking about accessory structures and heights and square footages. But I will pose the question of, cause with more square footage of roof area, you do get some rain runoff. Do you have any collection areas of, um, rainwater where it comes in on your property?
First of all...
You said it used to be a pond. Um, where was that pond located?
That pond was in front of the, the screen room shed.
So you've got the screen room and the pond was here?
Yeah, that, that landscaping area right there, that was the pond. It was just, it had a lot of, a lot of trees and a lot of wildlife, whatever.
Okay.
It just, it made it look like, uh, to me, looked beautiful in the summertime, spring, whatever. But then come fall, it looked like a jungle, and I just, I just put out every day along with the pond and my daughter's situation.
Okay, so when you're saying it was a pond, it might have been this deep?
No, it was four feet deep.
Interesting.
So it was, it was an indoor pool before that?
Yeah, I was told, yeah.
I got you. I got you.
Into, uh, what?
Okay.
Yeah, pond for, for this fish. But that, that property, it slants anyway, so where my A is, A is at and that C is at, rain comes down regardless. I don't have enough, I, I, before I even put that B there, that's the reason why I put B there, because it was just saturated. Like, it was soaked, so by me, like you said, I have to keep it clean. It already rains in that area. Like, I had to put more dirt in. I had to put two tons of dirt in, um, last, last year, just to level my ground. Because when my kids go out and play, they going into like a torch, that back of the fence towards her backyard, and it's just sludge regardless. I have nothing to do with that. That's not my control. That's just the way my, my yard is. It slants down regardless. So that, that shed and that B has nothing to do with water coming down.
Okay. Um, so where did you add the dirt in this area?
No, I added dirt, um...
In the landscape area, okay.
I leveled all that off that shed.
And all that makes it over to this way, and then it makes its way out that way?
It goes like dust people down.
Yep, I can picture that.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, it heads towards Chi-Lai Ave. Okay, yeah.
So you filled the pond in?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I filled the pond, yep.
Which was the landscape area, and then drainage does come from the west in the rear of your lot. I know there's a drainage easement that's there.
Yeah, I got it right outside my, the side, my secondary yard, it's right outside that. I actually...
Yeah, there's a drainage inlet right over here. Yep.
But I don't see how, if she says that I need to keep that clean and drainage, well, I can't control that.
Um, I'm just gonna, um...
I keep it clean from the branches coming over to my side and I go in and break it and everything. That's...
The branches aren't gonna cause drainage to that extent, but I would just ask, with these roof structures on here, don't have any gutters or downspouts heading it, um, onto that?
In her yard. It doesn't even go like that. It goes in my yard.
Exactly, that's, that's...
But still, that yard will get saturated regardless, because I'm on a downward slope. I had, my roof has nothing to do with if water come down and whatever. Plus, she got like thirty tall trees sitting there that's gonna soak up all the water anyway.
Correct, I'm just saying, with this one, try to keep it directed on there, planting gardens.
I'm getting it from home gets her. Like, I don't need to tell nobody, tell me how I've been doing stuff and I've been doing it because you guys are talking to me, because of this woman.
I am...
It's already, I know you ain't talking about it, but now you're making it sound like, because she emailed you, right? And told you to make sure I keep it clean. So now they're just giving you another awareness for her to call you guys and say, oh, he ain't doing this, and guess what? You're gonna give me another letter.
I'm gonna interrupt you on this one. I'm just pointing out that it was a good question and a point of fact that if this directs it that way, I'm asking you to just keep it on your property, which you're doing, so just continue doing it.
Yes, but you guys are gonna come to her rescue every time she open her freaking mouth.
No.
So why do I gotta do this, Paul? Do I gotta call the police? Do I gotta call the cops?
Sir?
I gotta cover people in my back pocket too, going...
That's good advice. So your applications are what we're considering here. I'm just pointing out that with those structures, and this goes with all structures that go next to property lines, just make sure to keep it on your property. It's just a reminder, a friendly reminder, and if you're doing it, then that's great. I did not go out onto the property for specific reasons, because we don't go onto private property. We stay on public property for a reason. I'm just pointing it out that it was a good question, and I wanted to check on it. That was it. All right, um, but I'd like to move on with this. I think I have to make a motion to close the public hearing. Or did I do that already?
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Um, moving on with this one. I'd like to remain the way we've, we've revised it already for A to be the accessory structures with A being removed, which also removes, um, or revises letter A to be four hundred and nine point one-one square feet. Letter B is withdrawn at the applicant's request, so we won't be considering that. Letter C is the screen room one, that remains as is. The height of the fences in the front yard, specifically on Florentine Way, would be six feet. Uh, on this one, I'm gonna keep each of those separate, uh, in terms of our decisions. So just to point it out to you, to move on with this, I'll declare the zoning board as lead agency. And based on the information evidence presented at this hearing, find this application to be a type-two action with no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Um... You know, removing that forty, forty-foot shed is, is just nitpicking, in my opinion.
Well, it does allow us to get rid of the side setback. Would you feel better to entertain?
I mean, the board wants to remove it, that's up to them, but I just think that's, I mean, I could, I could go put my arms around this thing and pick it up and move it.
Yeah.
It's not even a structure to me.
Yeah.
I mean, I...
I'm not as strong as you are, but take your word for it.
I mean, I've seen these on people's decks all the time. I don't even, I mean, yes, we're doing a complete inventory, but I don't consider that significant, any, any stretch of the imagination.
Okay, well, that's a good question. So what about the second, you know, Mark brought it up, and I went along and agree with it, because it does minimize our variance on that side setback, so...
But you're not, you're not doing away with the setback anywhere, you're still got it. You're leaving it with one shed, but you're still, the rear, the rear setback is five two.
We're only talking about the side setback.
So, but the other one, the B is less than eight.
Oh, you're right, that's five point nine.
You're not really doing away with it.
So what you're saying is, the five feet covers all three of them. So if we got rid of A, then we would still have to do a...
You've still got a variance.
You'd have to do a variance for five point nine feet. Yeah, I missed that, so...
And move what?
Because it's not a rear lot, it's a side lot.
Right, right. If you move A...
So if you move A, we still have to grant a variance for this one. Because we were doing the five foot, it covers both of them.
Right, so you're still minimizing the variance.
But I was eliminating this five feet, that's incorrect. We would be reducing it to five point nine feet.
But if you move A, you're still minimizing the variance.
Yeah, by foot.
Yes, but I can't remove letter B.
You can't take the...
I have to revise letter B to five point nine.
That's why it's plural.
Yeah, I, I missed that, I'm sorry. That's a good point.
We just let someone have five feet...
Yeah.
On the first application, right?
Yes. But each one also stands on their own, and...
Correct, each one stands on its own.
They had...
That's a very good point.
Totally different conditions on caboose circle.
Correct.
But it is a good point that the five point nine, so letter B cannot be stricken or removed, withdrawn, whatever word you want to use, it has to be revised to five point nine feet, regardless of taking A away. I guess, sir, it goes back to you, how strongly, two of us have voiced our opinion on it, not that it was a vote. You compromised and removed A, do you feel strongly enough that you'd like to risk it and keep it on there? And keep the request at four hundred and forty-nine and some change square feet, or you want to keep it as you revised it to be the four hundred and nine and remove A?
What do you mean by keep it and risk it?
So, meaning, we don't know how the board's gonna vote tonight, until we vote, and we can't say how we're gonna vote ahead of time, but you run the risk, if we say no, then you don't get any, if we say no to the square footage, then you technically don't get any of those, so you'd have to revise your inventory to be a hundred and ninety-two square feet, and that's it.
But square B has a permit.
So B's a hundred and ninety-two square feet, so you could leave B, but then you couldn't have any of the other things.
Yeah, I just think that we reduce A.
Okay. So we'll do that. But once again, I have to state I was incorrect on removing B, it just revises it to be a setback on this, because we have to do that to keep B and C because of this setback right here. It's not a rear setback, it's a side setback of five point nine feet, which would still cover it, because you, you'll have eight feet over here, and you can't move these structures. This one's built, like you said, it's an Amish-built one, you can't move that two, two feet easily without losing the entire shed.
Right.
So, okay. So, the seeker still stands for that, so we'll move on to motion to adopt, and we'll do application A, which is the accessory structures, B, C, and D, for a total of four hundred nine point eleven square feet, where a hundred and ninety-two square feet is allowed, ask for motion to adopt this application. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, board vote, Jim.
So we're voting on A right now?
No, he's gonna still leave A off, so it's, oh, sorry, letter A, sorry, I was thinking shed A, yes, just letter A.
voting with letter A?
Yes.
And that's four hundred and nine square feet?
Yes.
Yes. Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so that one, square footage-wise, you're approved on that. Now, letter B, the setback of accessories, setbacks of accessory structures to be revised to be five point nine feet. Ask for a motion to adopt this application. A motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so you're approved on that one. Letter C is for the screens, the screen room, that one was a pre-existing non-conforming, it's been there for, I don't know the exact amount of years, but that's the one that used to be next to the pond, for lack of a better term, or the pool. So ask for a motion to adopt this application?
Motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes. And then letter D is the height of the fence in the front yard on Florentine, the secondary front that he has. Ask for a motion to adopt this application for letter D, the height of fence.
Motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes on that one, so you are all set with those. Please continue to work with Paul and the building department for anything that may pop up, and keep your yard clean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've gotta move on, we've got a unique one with minutes from the last time. So the July meeting, we weren't able to perform action, because we only had three people for the quorum, but Mark had to recuse himself, because he wasn't here for the July meeting, so I'd like to ask for a motion to accept and approve the minutes from the July meeting, where you're gonna recuse yourself.
Yeah.
So what are you asking for? So we've got a, this is the July meeting first, then we'll do the August meeting.
Aye.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstained.
All right, now we'll move on to the August meeting, and this time, you two have to recuse yourselves, because you weren't at the August meeting. So ask for a motion to accept and approve the minutes, we have a motion, I'll make a second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have two abstentions from Phil and Fred.
Wrong finger.
Wrong finger. Now I'd ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Motion, we have a motion, is there a second?
We got a problem though.
What's that?
We were told that we were having to this meeting for zoning.
For what?
For...
We were supposed to be at this meeting.
For what?
For last week.
I, for what property?
Twenty-eight seventy Chillicoee Avenue. You'll need time off.
I don't have that on my agenda.
I have...
We got approval from Jerry and all that.
I know nothing about that one.
Saying there's a fifth application?
I'm saying it appears that there was a fifth application. It didn't, so the issue we would have, we couldn't legally hear it tonight, because it's not on the public notice, so if it's not on the public notice, we, even if we did inaction tonight, we would have to redo it again next month, because that would be an invalid action.